The time is 7:43 PM and I call the November 18th, 2025 council meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, where I'm stationed, under God, in a visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we just had an executive session related to legal advice for public comment. And I will be leading the council meeting tonight as your council vice president. Council president and mayor-elect Thompson is away for business. And I didn't know I would be leading this meeting, but thank you, Don, for offering to lead it. So now that we are in our meeting, we will start with a roll call and there's nobody here to do the... Oh, and Kim is... Right, well, I'm going to start with the roll call, but there's nobody to actually... Yes, thank you. Thank you. Are we... Can we see councilperson Siegel Morris up there? Or is she... Make sure she's with us.
She may have a camera.
I'm here.
Okay, you're here. Great. Hi. Okay. So there's no one to do the roll call, so I'm going to do the roll call. Councilperson Stump.
Present.
Councilperson Carlson.
Present.
And councilperson Finer is present. Councilperson Thompson is not present. And councilperson Siegel Morris.
I'm here.
Okay. And councilperson Scherer.
Present.
Here. And councilman Applebaum.
Present.
Person. Okay. Thank you. We have four council people, five council people here in person, one remotely, so we have a quorum. And we'll start with community announcements. Does anyone here at the table have any community announcements to share? Yes?
Just a reminder that the Yule Christmas parade is December 6th, beginning at 3:00 PM. Thank you. The holiday parade is on December 6th, that's a Saturday, beginning at 3:00 PM, approximate ending around 4:15, 4:30, at which time we will have a winter wonderland presentation with Santa Claus and different vendors. And it's been expanded for this year to make... To help keep people on site longer and to take advantage of all the great, you know, stores and, you know, restaurants. And so we have, you know, added, as part of the YPA, just especially the market area, it's going to be a much more involved and a lot more activity for people to, you know, participate. So I encourage people to come and stay. And that's really it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. I do understand that next year is going to be known as the Holiday Parade, as opposed to the...
Really? I will not make that announcement.
Oh.
I'm not.
Oh, that's what I heard.
I'm not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I heard you refer to it as that. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yes?
I just wanted to let people know a little ahead, make some plans if you like to. On December the 13th, Friends of Lake Afton will be having annual pop-up gift shop called All Things Yardley Gift Shop. And this year, we're having it at Friends Meeting House. So there'll be plenty of parking and there's even a handicap accessible doorway to get in from right from the parking lot with no steps or anything. And it'll be from 12 to 5:00.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we will move on to public comment. This is the portion of the meeting where members of the public can approach the table, share their name and address, actually, share their name and keep their comments to three minutes or less. Is there any public comment? Okay. And with that, we will move on to consideration of the consent agenda dated November 18th, 2025. I'm going to ask for item A to be removed, which is approval of minutes dated November 5th, 2025, and considered separately. The other three items are certificate of appropriateness, 25, 26, 44, South Main-St. Pollards, North Main, Phase 3 sidewalks, change order number 1, test pits, and photos with Santa, Buttonwood Park, 12, 7, 10 to 3 Yardley Rotary Club. Does anyone would like to remove any other items? Okay. So we will... Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda without item A?
Same way.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion was made by councilperson Scherer, seconded by councilperson Applebaum. Is there any discussion for anyone?
I just had a question.
Yes.
Maybe Public Works can answer it. The additional test pits that we're doing for Phase 3, why wasn't that in the original? But why is it incremental cost, do you know?
I don't know. That's an engineer question and I don't have the answer. Yeah. I imagine it just came up and wasn't predicted, but it's a good question. So we'll have to follow up on that.
I'll ask them tomorrow.
Okay. All right. So I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes unanimously, which is...
No. Caroline is not here.
Unanimously, six...
I don't know who's here.
Six, zero.
Is that him?
Yeah. Okay. I'll just say six, zero then.
Yeah.
Six, zero.
Okay.
Vice President Finer?
Yes.
May I ask a favor before we move too far down the agenda?
Sure.
We do have a hiring of a conditional officer, and I know we have officers in present. Could we move that up to the front to allow them to appreciate that and then head out?
Absolutely. Absolutely. So we'll consider the removed item afterwards. So just if I forget that, remind me that I missed the removed item.
Okay.
So we'll move on to general government, item B, vote to authorize conditional offer for part-time officer.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So this is actually for a motion to hire, not conditional.
Thank you.
So with that, the history Yardley Borough is served by dedicated police officers who provide police services on various shifts, 24/7, and play a vital role in the efficient and effective delivery of services to the borough. We currently, Mr. Vice President, have three vacancies for part-time police officers. During my report to Borough Council on Tuesday, October 7th, 2025, I had asked during my report for council to give a conditional offer of employment to applicant Corey McConaughey, pending the review of the application, the background check, and the passing of all required examinations, and all other Municipal Police Officer Education and Training Commission eligibility requirements. Mr. Vice President, I was notified by the Municipal Police Officers Training and Education Commission on November 8th that Mr. Corey McConaughey had met and passed all eligibility requirements and is now certified to take office as a Yardley Borough police officer. I respectfully request council to consider your motion for Yardley Borough to extend an offer of employment and to hire Mr. Corey McConaughey as a part-time police officer.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make the... Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Motion was made by councilperson Scherer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilperson Applebaum. Any discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? And motion passes six, zero. All right. Welcome.
You want to grab the flags for me? That'd be great. Thanks.
Go for them or...
Yeah, just do it. Let's do it. All right.
I'll catch you the yes stand. Don't take out the globe like I once tried. Yeah, watch it. You're...
And those of you I haven't met, my name is Chris Harding, I'm the mayor here at Yardley Borough. I do promise you that we usually have these flags set up before the council meeting, but we lost the help of our really awesome people to do this today, so we figured it out. So before we swear yea, Corey, obviously, I just want to make... I think if that being intense, so I just want to make them aware that Yardley Borough, the council, our borough staff, the entire department, and all the residents take very seriously the commitment you're about to make to the borough. We know being a police officer comes with its risks and its challenges, and we don't take that lightly, and we are here to support you and also protect you as you protect us. Okay? You got... So you want to swear in?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So please raise your hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this common law.
And the Constitution of this common law.
I will uphold the laws and ordinances.
I will uphold the laws and ordinances.
Of the borough of Yardley.
Of the borough of Yardley.
And I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of a non-civil service police officer.
Of a non-civil service police officer.
Of the borough of Yardley.
Of the borough of Yardley.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
And to the best of my judgment.
And to the best of my judgment.
And ability.
And ability.
Welcome to Police Department. Thank you. So we started what we believe is a nice tradition that Chief Gold is continuing on in order for your first pinning. Is there someone here this evening that you'd like to have do that? I thought I'd have some special meeting for you. Perfect answer. All right. My name's Chris. Okay. So you're going to take this, careful, it's a little sharp. And you're just going to slide that tool and kind of break down the... And then actually push it up. How that works? Got it? You did it. Look at that. Woo! Great job. Okay. We're going to ask you to stay here for a couple of seconds and we're going to get a couple of family pictures. The family wants to come up. Anybody else? Come on up. Anybody else with pictures? We'll take them. You have a phone you want to use?
Yeah.
All right. Take one with the family and she will get you in there for one and we'll get one with the partner. All right, ready? One, two, three. Get in there like you know each other. All right, one, two, three. Hang on, I got it. All right, ready? One, two. Let you get a video of these things. Cheese, you want to get it? All right. There you go. Looking good. All right, you good? All right. Come on up. Real quick. I want to say something like this to feel like a proof. All right, guys, got it.
Okay.
I just feel like the movie "Peaches."
It's hard not to hit it, I think.
Yeah, that one right there.
Thank you.
You were the best part of the meeting, so there's no point to stay.
Thank you, Vice President, for moving that.
Thank you for the suggestion.
You remember what you have to do, Mr. Vice President?
You know, we're flying blind here. We don't have any assistance, so we'll try to get through this. I don't think it'll be too bad. We're still on... I know, I know. That part I know because I'm the one that pulled it. So we're now going to resume our meeting and we'll consider the item that was pulled, which is item A, approval of minutes dated November 5th, 2025, when I pulled that from the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve item A? From the consent agenda?
So moved.
You have a motion and a second by... So a motion made by councilperson Stump and seconded by councilperson Scherer. The discussion, and I'll start the discussion. The reason I pulled it, thanks for, Don, for calling it out and calling it to my attention, is that in the minutes, something is stated incorrectly here, so I'm going to ask to... I have the motion on the table, I'm going to ask for a correction. So let me just get them up and tell you what the issue is. Okay. So it says under the grant, thank you, that RVE is preparing for the Borough Hall. It said that Mr. Finer commented about reducing the $2,600 that RVE will charge for grant preparation by doing some of the work in-house. That part is correct, but then it said also he is strongly against replacing the historic windows in Borough Hall and involving HARB in the conversation about the renovations. It's a bit ambiguous the way this is worded. What it was is I was against replacing the historic windows with new windows, and I was insisting that HARB be involved in all the conversation about renovations. So it's affirmative for HARB to be involved. So I would just like to make that correction, and if that correction will be made, I'm going to go ahead and we can move forward on approving with the understanding that correction will be made. So I'll... We'll go ahead and move to a vote on that. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion...
One abstained.
One abstained. Okay.
Right, because he wasn't here.
Okay. So motion passes six, zero, one.
Five, zero, one.
Five, zero, one. Sorry, my math.
You got your math.
Thank you. Usually I'm good at math, but sometimes... Five, zero, one. And we will move on to the next item. And the next item is the finance report, and this is a consideration to accept the November 18th, 2025, finance report. So I'll ask for consensus from council to accept the finance report bill list dated November 18th, 2025. Any issues or questions on that? Do we have consensus?
Nope.
Okay. We have consensus, and we will... Just a second here. Too many windows. Okay. We're going to move on, and this is the... Our work session meeting, so the second meeting we have each month, we have work sessions. They've been pretty brief recently. Sometimes they can get lengthy. Tonight, we have general government, community outreach, and community and economic development. The first general government item, we already did. That was the hiring of the part-time officer. Thank you. Our second item, which is actually item A, is Resolution 25-11, LSA grant for Borough Hall. These are for renovations for Borough Hall. Do I have a motion to approve that resolution?
Moved.
Okay. Motion was made by councilperson Scherer. Do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded by councilperson Applebaum. Any discussion from council?
Mike, concern, are we approving the dollar value that's going to go in the LSA grant?
So...
Or are we just approving that we're going to go for it?
I thought it was... It was the amount was discussed, the $2,600 is what we're approving, $2,600.
Okay. No, I'm talking about the... In the grant.
I thought the grant.
Oh.
That's what we were approving, because we talked about the $2,600 last meeting.
The amount, right. Oh, that's right. That's right. Okay.
This is not, because it's due by the end of the...
This is to apply for the grant.
Is to apply, but I don't think we're approving any specific amount that's going to be applied for until we...
I thought it was in there.
Was it? Okay.
Yeah, I thought we were.
All right, let's...
Because if we are, I have concerns.
Okay. Yeah, could you bring it up? Because I have to find what page is it on? In the agenda? Then we can look at it at the same time. Twenty-four?
Twenty-four through 27.
Okay.
Got it.
Oh, yeah, okay. I got it.
Well, it's actually 22. Starts with 22.
Oh.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the site plan. Okay.
This is the resolution. I...
But the resolution doesn't have an amount.
Yes, it does.
Oh, it does? Okay. Eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifteen...
And so my concern is, is in the breakdown of costs, $113,000 of that 887 is for a roof. Now, I don't know why we put roof in here, because we separately have applied for roof. Now, maybe we won't get it this month, you know, we may not get it from the 2025 money. But my understanding was... My understanding was that if we didn't get the money this year, we would then pursue the short-term loan, because we have to do it. So this is...
Makes sense.
If we get this grant, this will be a year from now, basically.
Right.
And that'll be too late. We're going to do the roof before then. So I think we should amend this before it goes out to remove the roof replacement cost from this 887, the line items that are associated with the roof, because we've already gotten them covered elsewhere.
Because we were already committed to doing it the other way.
Right.
And we can't retroactively... If we were to get this a year later, we can't retroactively use it anyway.
Right, right, right.
There's no benefit to putting it here, except that it maybe harms our ability to... It raises the amount, which makes it presumably harder to qualify.
That's a question. Do people think bigger projects get bigger better?
There is a minimum. Yeah, yeah. But in any case, it serves no purpose unless... I didn't work on this, but Manager Johnson's not here today, but...
What about the... What about the grant we did apply for? Do we know about that?
We don't know the answer yet.
They haven't met yet.
Oh, really? I thought we were supposed to know about this time.
Close.
Okay.
As of this morning, they had not yet met the group that meets to decide that.
We're waiting on that.
It's not yet.
That's our Plan A. But it... Plan B is to pay for it using the...
But this would be like Plan C, which overlaps Plan B, so it doesn't make sense.
Plan C is non-viable, because we already will have done Plan B.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
Right, that's why I... Now, I brought that up with Paul, and she said, well, then you would then, if this was submitted and we went ahead and did the roof, which we probably will, we would then amend this to remove that later.
That would be true.
My opinion is, let's just take it out now.
But you said we're going to apply for it soon, or by the end of the month? I couldn't hear you.
This application has to go in by the end of...
Right, that's...
This month or next month.
Right.
We already put in an application.
We already put in an application for the roof.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not sure why it's in here.
Doesn't make any sense.
I just want to make sure that we have an insurance that this won't affect us negatively in any way, so as long as you can... I mean, I'm speaking more to Don than you or that you feel confident that we can remove it and it wouldn't...
The only time, reason to move it in there is if the new council thinks, decides, no, we don't want to go the lone route for the roof.
Okay.
Assuming we don't get this year's rent. And we'd instead want to go have it be part of the big thing, and you want to do a patch, you know, allocate 40 grand to do, get another nine months out of it. If that's the direction to go, then you'd want it in there. That's the only scenario where it would make sense to leave it in there.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, if it's like sort of an insurance plan to throw it in there. But what we don't know is the... And if we ask the engineer, I would predict that the engineer wouldn't know either, because you don't know what's on the receiving end of these grant applications and what decision-making is being used. Do they... Does it look better because it's 887 or does it look better it's 750, you know? That's an unknown.
Just my personal opinion, though, I think it looks better if we take it out, because I think it could potentially be perceived as, oh, we're applying for a grant for three-quarters of a million dollars for, you know, an aging historic building, and, oh, by the way, we snuck in our roof repair that we should be doing that out of a maintenance fund, not like if it's perceived that way, that could potentially hurt us.
This is due by the end of this month, right? So we don't have another council meeting.
No.
So I'm okay to take it out. I think we should just take it out. It doesn't make any sense to me that it's in there.
So I'd like to amend the motion.
Okay.
Do we have time to take it out and...
Yeah. We just amend... We approve it now with line items for the roof removed from it.
So do you want to amend your original? Since you made the motion, do you want to amend it?
I make a motion to take out the police roof out of this document.
So just to be clear, so you're making a motion to approve Resolution... Sorry, too many windows open.
Approve Resolution 25-11 with the understanding that the police department roof will be removed.
Will be removed.
Of the document.
Okay. So that was... Motion was made by councilperson Scherer. Do we have a second to the amended motion? I'll second. Seconded by councilperson Stump. And any further discussion?
With that change in... Will we specify the amount? Is the difference between 887, 115 dot sixty?
I don't... I'm not going to do the math now. I don't think we ever just take out...
I know you're not.
Take out... No, I can do it, but I think it's likely to have a mistake.
Right.
This way, we just take out anything roof-related.
Okay.
And then it's simply...
Remove items 34 and 35.
Okay, there you go. Remove items 34 and 35.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So I will call it. All those in favor?
Thirty-six, two for the wood decking.
Why don't we just say...
Why don't we just keep it as it's roof-related items?
I think it's clear.
Okay. Got it.
Okay. So I will call it. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to take out the police roof out of this document.
So, so just to be clear, so you're making a motion to approve Resolution, sorry, too many, too many windows open.
Approve Resolution 25-11 with the understanding that the police department roof will be removed.
Will be removed.
Of the document.
Okay, so that was, motion was made by councilperson Scherer. Do we have a second to the amended motion? I'll second. Seconded by councilperson Stump, and any further discussion?
With that change in, will we specify the amount? Is the difference between eight-eight-seven, one-fifteen dot sixty?
I don't, I'm not going to do the math now. I don't think we ever just take out, take out. No, no, I could do it, but I, I think it's, it's likely to have a mistake.
Right.
This way, we just take out anything roof-related.
Okay.
And then it's simply.
Remove items thirty-four and thirty-five.
Okay, there you go. Remove items thirty-four and thirty-five.
Fair enough.
Already.
Thank you.
All right, so I will call it. All those in favor?
Thirty-six, two for the wood decking.
Why don't we just say, why don't we just keep it as its roof-related items? I think it's clear.
Okay, got it.
Okay, so I will call it. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed?
Abstained.
And motion passes six-zero. Thank you. We're going to move on to community outreach. The first item is consideration to appoint and reappointments to borough boards and commissions.
Yeah, so it's, it's that time of the year again that we have a few of the people who are up for renewal. And as I was looking through kind of the, the guidelines for community outreach to do this, we have a, two of the previous chair and one of the previous members, they outlined a process that they use, just kind of as a general guide, but stated that it wasn't binding. But one of the things that they had was that anytime there's a position open, we would advertise it as a vacancy. Again, this is just how they did it. But then preference would be given to candidates that are already on the board that are reapplying. And as I started thinking about it, I thought we're kind of creating some unnecessary work if we advertise, hey, you could come be on Parks and Rec. But the two spots, we have people that are applying, and it's already been stated in the policy, we're going to give them preference. So actually, all you new people who applied, it doesn't matter, we just kind of threw a hook out there, and then it's a bait and switch almost. So I opted not to do that for, there are some positions that we're going to be advertising, we'll get to that a little bit later, but for the, for the bulk of them, my recommendation was that we just accept the reappointments. We did, Michelle and Paul and I did our due diligence. We reviewed all the applications, we communicated with the current board chairs, liaisons, a lot of the people we know, so we have, you know, a baseline understanding of what's going on. And so our recommendations were to reappoint Richard Edwards to the zoning hearing board with a term ending twelve-thirty-one, 2030. Reappoint Susan Taylor to the planning commission with a term ending twelve-thirty-one, 2029. I will say a note I liked on Susan's application for references because she's been around Yardley for so long, she wrote, whoever. And I thought that was very appropriate. Just ask anyone in town if we should keep Susan on the planning commission and see what they say. For HARB, the Historic Architecture Review Board, we have, this is for reappointments, Dan Ward with a term ending twelve-thirty-one, 2029, and Tim Foster, term ending the same date. And then there is a vacant seat on there as Joy Harrington is not seeking reappointment. So we'll get to that after we go through all this. Parks and Rec, we have Carol Such and Emily Davis for terms ending twelve-thirty-one, 2028. For Shadtree, we have Christine Thomas for a term ending twelve-thirty-one, 2030. For Civil Service Commission, we have Scott Storopoly with a term ending twelve-thirty-one, 2031. It's throwing me off that we're getting into the 2030s. For the vacancy board, Roger Crook with a term ending twelve-thirty-one, 2026. For Human Relations, Emily Davis with a term ending twelve-thirty-one, 2028. For the Sewer Authority, Carl Porella with a term ending one-one, 2031. All of the applications for these individuals are in your packet. Do we want to open it up to see if anybody has any questions?
Let's put a motion on, on the table.
Oh, we do have to do a motion first, sorry.
We can do a motion first, so.
Are you going to add?
I'll do that one separately. I have more to, I have more to share on that.
So do you, do you want to make a motion to approve the appointments and reappointments as stated?
Yeah, can I make the motion even if it's my own agenda item? Or does somebody else have to make it?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve these reappointments as read.
Very good. So motion made by councilperson Stump. Do we have a second?
Second.
And seconded by councilperson Carlson. Now, open for discussion. Do you want to continue? Good more?
I mean, I think it's all self-explanatory.
Okay.
If anybody has any questions about any of the candidates, I'd be happy to answer them, but.
Okay. Well, first, thank you for the work you did, both of you, and just getting these boards and commissions fully staffed and staffed with good people. I think it's, it's a good policy. We spoke about it in the past, previous years, not to just automatically reappoint, but really to always work towards finding the best people for the available positions. And it's more work that way, but if we want our boards and commissions to be effective, you know, the volunteer, you know, the names can be glorious, but they're, they're essentially volunteer groups. And with volunteer groups, you can get really effective people and you can get really not effective people. So, you know, the more work that's done towards finding the people who really want to make something happen.
Yeah.
It's a good investment, so thank you for doing that.
And I can also say, I personally know the majority of the people on this list, so all green lights for me. I see no issues unless anybody has any concerns.
Okay.
Or if any table, members of the public, both of you.
Yes, members of the public. I'm sorry, you know, I, I think I've not really been addressing the public since we two blend in so well.
Members of the public, AKA future councilpeople elect.
You might as well just join us because we have empty seats here. Okay, so I think we're ready to call the question. All those in favor, please signify. Five are saying aye.
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 Okay, so the motion, and any opposed?
Abstained.
Motion passes six-zero.
So then the, the other one I have to bring up is for the, I always get the name of this committee wrong. David, is it the Environmental Advisory Commission?
Ding, ding, ding. You win.
Okay, sometimes I say committee, sometimes I say environmental action. I'm just going to call it the EAC because that's for short.
Yardley EAC.
So for that one, we have, so with the EAC, we had a vacancy back in September, and so we had two individuals actually applied for it, and one of them actually told me to appoint the other one, and that person is now the chair, and so I told her I would keep her name on file for a future opening. So that was Julie Passini and Elizabeth Osgpach. I might be saying her name wrong. I don't know if anybody knows how to say her name, we're just going to go with that. I'm just going to call her Elizabeth. So Julie, we appointed. Elizabeth, we told her we'd keep her on file. We have a term ending on twelve-thirty-one, 2025 for Mr. Zachary Bark, and so my initial recommendation, just comparing the applications, I was going to make a recommendation, but I actually ended up calling Mr. Bark today and had a similar situation. He said, hey, put up Elizabeth. So that was going to be my recommendation, just nothing against Mr. Bark, but given, he also serves on the planning commission, and given some of the things the EAC is going to be handling in 2026, especially with Judy's Garden, with the Trailhead, we really want to tap into Elizabeth's knowledge of native plants. So as I, as I told Zach, I said, we want to kind of, you know, if Elizabeth is, she's been coming to the meetings just as a member of the public, but if she's an official member, then we've, we've kind of got her locked in for a number of years. And so I asked him if he'd be okay with that, rather than making it like a, hey, come in and interview thing, what do you think? And so he said that he would, he very graciously said that he, we should appoint her to the seat, so that would be my recommendation.
So this is, I have you as one item, so we're going to do sort of a sub item.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. So do you want to make a, a motion to appoint her? Is that what your motion is?
Yes, I think the emotion would be to appoint Elizabeth to the EAC with a term ending, how many years is that for the EAC?
Three years.
Is it three years, David? I think it is, right?
Lisa, let me just double check, but I, you didn't ask me.
We should probably do it, we should probably double check to make sure we do it correctly. So let's see, Julie's is, well, Julie's is 2026 because that was a stub term, right? Like, she's just filling in for.
This is a full, this is a full term, correct?
It's three, three-year term.
The terms are three.
Three-year term, yes.
Okay.
So it'd be twelve-thirty-one, 2028. So my motion is to, I'm just going to restate it. My motion is to appoint Elizabeth Osgpach to the environmental.
Advisory.
Advisory Committee.
Commission.
Commission! With a term ending. That's why I'm leaving council, because I can't say the names of our committees correctly. With a term ending twelve-thirty-one, 2028.
Okay, thank you. Motion made by councilperson Stump, and do we have a second?
I'd be, sorry. No, no.
That was, once, I think, I think I heard Applebaum first.
All right, well, I would graciously and be honored to make that second.
And seconded by councilperson Applebaum. Any discussion by anyone? Looking good. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
And motion passes six-zero. And with that, we will move on.
One more, just.
To item B.
Before we get to that, Ori, I just have one more.
Oh, one more.
Share with the, with HARB. This is not necessarily a vote, but just more of a general housekeeping, so, so with the vacant seat open, what we would go on to the next step would be to advertise this position and people can apply. I've already had one individual send their application in. They got excited, thought we were appointing somebody tonight, and said, oh, wait, include me. So we're not appointing somebody tonight. We don't necessarily have a timeline. Is that, David, are you?
I'm waiting for you to.
Okay, gotcha. I'll come down in a second. So the next step would be that we advertise a vacancy, and then we will take it from there based on who applies, so.
And just to clarify, when you say advertise a vacancy, you mean blast it on social media?
Yeah, so borough email lists.
Not advertise it in the paper.
Not advertise it in the paper. A billboard, actually, on two-ninety-five.
Billboard?
Is what I had in mind.
The Borough Email.
Yeah.
Borough Email is a good place.
The way we, the way we advertise other vacancies, and so that will give the general public, and I'm also stating it tonight, so it gives the general public an opportunity to apply, and we do not have a date set yet at which we will do that.
Lovers of history and architecture.
Yeah, well, that's what I want to comment on, if you don't.
Go for it, David.
I'm going to bring it up. It's a little bit more complex than just accepting people's applications because they're interested in serving. There is a level of expertise or industry experience. I just wanted to see if I could find it very quickly.
Thank you.
I don't know what Joy's expertise is or was, so I won't comment on that, but I will read this. In regard, okay, HARB provides its recommendation to borough council regarding matters that are pertinent to the preservation of the historic aspect and nature of the structures located in the borough's historic district. Its mission is to protect the integrity of that district characterized by structures of significant age and architectural importance by reviewing the appropriateness of proposed changes to the exterior of buildings in the historic district. The board meets the first and third, Thursday of each month at seven-thirty here in, in this room, and its members serve a four-year term, and there are four member residents required. That's why we need to fill the spot. I would like, or I would ask you to, I'm sorry, Jared, to consult with Mr. Taylor and just find out what we're looking for in a replacement for Joy, because it's important that we fill that role with someone who matches that level of expertise. That could be a real estate agent, an architect. There's a number of different types of industries and experience that are necessary.
How many architects are left on that board right now? Do we know?
Well, we have Jerry. Taylor's an architect.
Are we down to only three residents of the borough on the board, which we're leaving?
Well, we have Joy Harrington, who's leaving, Eli Dreyfus, Jerry Taylor, who's an architect, it's in parentheses, Dan Ward, Gail Posey, who lives in a historic building, but I don't know if she has, you know.
No, I'm just asking, do we have, because it requires, like, for this, so, some of the boards require everyone on it to be a borough resident. This requires for the people to be borough residents, so.
Everyone should be a borough resident if they're being.
Okay, I thought you were saying that with Joy leaving, we don't have.
I didn't say anything. I just said that I want to make sure that she has the essential.
Oh, I see.
CV requirements for that role. That's all I'm saying.
I think, I think we can basically, if, if you have an interest, apply. Architects and people with historic building knowledge, people who've been through historic renovation in the historic district, those kinds of people are encouraged to apply, but anyone can apply and then.
Yeah, but I still would encourage you to have a conversation with Mr. Taylor, just to make sure that I have all my facts right, because though I am the liaison, I, I didn't know that you were going to announce this tonight, so I wanted to make sure that I'm on the.
Gotcha.
The right side of things. That's all. That's simple.
And they need to be a borough resident for this committee. So we'll clarify, just clarify that since we.
They should be a borough resident, yes.
Since we said that. My apologies for any confusion I may have caused there.
No worries. No worries.
Okay, so that's just the announcement, right?
Yep, that's it.
And we're going to.
I'm done.
Okay, no, that's good. Thank you.
Judy's Garden is under here, but I don't know how that got under here.
So we're going to move this forward. Yeah, so that's what I was going to say. I don't know why it's under community outreach. I'll take Judy's Garden because I'm the one who dealt with it. And this is the situation with Judy's Garden, which is item B right now under community outreach. So Judy's Garden is the property that was donated to the borough with the vision of creating a beautiful garden, sanctuary space. It is on North Main Street, just north of the Yellow House. It will not have parking, but it's on a property that was going to be a house, and the owner of that house, his wife tragically passed away, and he decided to donate it to the borough so that the community can enjoy a tranquil space with the garden, and this is, will, I think will be exciting for Parks and Rec and the Environmental Advisory Commission to get involved in, put a nice garden there. And the donor, in addition, purchased a beautiful statue called the Dancer, I believe, which is seven feet or so tall. It was created by a beautiful sculptor, or, sorry, a renowned sculptor who creates work at Grounds for Sculpture. And it's currently sitting in New Hope, waiting for us to install it. And in Judy's Garden currently, we are awaiting the sewer project because the sewer project goes through Judy's Garden, and there's a temporary easement for them. What we're trying to figure out, and I've been pushing for, is since the sculpture is going to be quite far from where the temporary and permanent easements are, to just go ahead and install the sculpture so we can have it under the, you know, where it's going to be.
Should we make a motion and then have the discussion?
Just going to give you some background. So with all that context, tonight, what we're going to make, what I'm going to make a motion for is the donor of the property who also purchased this sculpture for the property would like to officially provide, transfer ownership from himself to the borough. And so we are going to vote to accept donation of the sculpture for Judy's Garden, and I'll make a motion to do so.
I'll second that.
Okay, so motion made by myself and Finer, and seconded by councilperson Applebaum. Any discussion?
Do we know where we're going to keep it until we're ready?
It's currently in, in New Hope, and it's okay to stay there until.
Okay.
Until we're ready. But, you know, it'd be nice to get it towards going if it can go there sooner.
Is there any reason to believe that we couldn't place the sculpture before the sewer project is complete, since I understand from the planning commission's work and what you showed me that it's at a distance that.
Correct.
Couldn't possibly be, or couldn't interfere with that sewer work?
Correct. And when I went to the planning commission meeting last week, they were, you were there too. They were, indicated to me they were still making some revisions to their recommendations to us of how to, how to make use of the property, within the context of the spirit and the vision of what was, the way in which it was donated, but, you know, to kind of get into the detail, the sculpture is quite far from the temporary easement. So the way I look at it is, we had to do the Mary Yardley Bridge, and we had this whole project to raise the canal. We couldn't go into the Pico property because we hadn't owned it yet, so we had to very, very carefully navigate around that, which we succeeded in doing, because we couldn't even really go one inch into their property.
Right, exactly.
So to me, there's no double standards.[1581.73] So, to me, there's no double standards. If that's the standard that we complied with, I expect the same standard from the Sewer Authority when they do their project to comply with their temporary easement and their permanent easement. That's just on, from a general philosophy perspective, but practically speaking, the statue is quite far from where they would be accessing their easements from the road. So there's no chance that they would hit it or knock it over. You know, it just doesn't make any sense unless they, you know, overstated their welcome and turned other parts of the property into an easement. But they haven't been given permission to do that, so I don't see why they would do that. There was a lot of negotiation with all the property owners when it came up to doing temporary and permanent easements for this project. So all that's kind of behind us. So, and I, my understanding, although I haven't seen it yet, is the revised, the second revision of where that sculpture's gonna go is even further away from the easement. In other words, there's really no chance that a truck could, like, cut a corner narrow and knock it over. It's a seven-foot-tall thing.
Is this the Sewer Commission liaison?
Yes.
What you're going through here has nothing to do with placing it there. It has nothing to do with where the easement is, because obviously, yeah, the easement is, has already been defined where it is. That's not the question. The Sewer Authority is recommending that we not move a sculptor in there, and I firmly believe this, for the primary reason of, right now, it's a property, and to most residents, it just, they don't, well, they know there's a park coming. It hasn't been turned into a park at all yet. If you go and plop a sculpture in there, people are gonna start to think, oh, now it's a park. And then there's gonna be major construction going on around it. Not that they're gonna encroach on it. I'm not saying they would encroach on it. But why have people think it's a park and more people go down there and the safety issues, et cetera? Why do that? What's the rush, is my opinion?
Oh, your point is.
Now, the comment, the other thing is, relative to when the work is going to be done there, okay? The last permit, they had to redo all their permits, primarily because of time they had run out. They've got the last permit has been, been upped by, I forget who it was, doesn't matter who it was. So they are just about ready to go out to bid. They are going out to bid immediately after the, they don't want to go out to bid in between Thanksgiving and Christmas, and think they'll get good. So immediately at the beginning of the year, they go out to bid. And then, they obviously already have the funds for it, so there's no issue there. And then, so the most likely scenario is you go out to bid in January, awarded by March, start work in April. Then, it's a nine-month project to do the whole thing. Now, the question is, is what's going to be done first?
Exactly.
And that's not a decision made by the Sewer Authority's engineers. It's really the contractor comes back, when they, the winning bidder, then they do the construction speculating on their Gantt charts, et cetera. However, the engineer has told me that going under the canal was one of the key pieces of this project, because it's gonna set the pitch, if you will. Because they got, they know, so where they, on each side of the canal, where they end up with that pipe, controls the upstream lane and the downstream lane. So the odds are relatively high that the contractor will say, I want to do that first, so, because that sets me up for the rest. But he won't, he won't go out on a limb saying, we're not telling them they have to do it that way.
Right.
But, so, I'm hopeful that early on in the project, the disruptions at the, at that property will be early on in the project. That's not a guarantee. So we're working it, so we're looking at April, May, June, I mean, it's winter anyways.
We're not voting on that anyway. We're voting on whether it sets the.
It's a bit of a tangent, but we are.
Well, we, yeah, the motion, this has nothing to do with the motion. We should've voted on the motion.
I just want to make sure that.
We should've voted on the motion, but you started.
It is, it is our discussion workshop.
But you had brought it up. So, you know, and I totally agree with Don, because I've walked past there, and it's very uneven. If you stick a statue anywhere, people are gonna want to go to it, and I don't walk easily on uneven ground. And you're gonna find that, that's probably true with a lot of people. You don't want somebody in there falling, because it's, I would wait till it looks more like a park, so that then people can go see it, instead of being disappointed that, like, why is this here, and where's the rest of the park?
Right. It looked.
It should all be around the same time.
I'm sorry.
My opinion. I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, I was going to concur, and, you know, with the change in weather, with those complexities, how long did you, did you think that they would hold it for us in New Hope?
Indefinitely.
Indefinitely.
Definitely?
Well, they, I was on that email chain, and, yeah, they, they're not in a rush to get rid of it. Let me just take a step back. Everything you're saying makes sense to me. The part that doesn't make sense to me is when, I've been involved in these projects, like the Mary Yardley Bridge, that they start to just snowball into, like, endless delay. And when I don't have dates, I just don't believe something's gonna happen. So if they do go out to bid between Thanksgiving or.
No, it's gonna be right after the first.
After the first of the year?
Yeah.
Okay, nothing's gonna happen between now and the first of the year. They go out to bid. If that actually happens, and we see the process moving, then I'd feel more comfortable to wait. That makes more sense to me. But if it's one of those things where it just goes on for two, three years, and we don't get any movement, the reason to move the statue is because it's now gonna be our statue and our sculpture, and should be under our control if we own a valuable piece of art.
Yeah, I hear you. I wanted to make, give you some thought, a thought about this. We have taken, I didn't send an email out yet because it just happened, but we took delivery of the Chimney Swift structure, and is now in the annex, in the empty garage that used to be the limousine area. So my thought is, maybe we can take delivery of it and store it. It's not gonna affect anything. I, we can double-check with Paula, but I'm pretty sure, nothing's been in there for years, and this is the first time we're using that area, so I don't know if it would be a logistical issue, but I just, if it makes you feel more comfortable, we could actually take possession of it.
We could, I don't think we should, that makes sense, and thank you for suggesting it, but I don't think we need to move it twice. It's better if we just move it once, because it's heavy.
Simply want to put it out.
Yeah, it's, I think that, obviously, we just need to wait and see if the going out to bid actually happens. And if it doesn't happen, then we can bring the topic up again and see.
Yeah.
Deal with it. I, you know, I do think you can put things in places without, you know, people put decorative sculptures that are not parks in places, but we wanna, we don't have to.
But related to that structure?
Yeah.
The pad that it's gonna be on, the things around it, all that stuff?
Right.
Have we raised all the funds to do that? We're ready to just do it?
No, that's gonna be.
So let's, let's spend our time now raising the funds, so we have the money to do this when the sewer thing is done.
Well, I believe we have, yeah, well, I, there, that's probably gonna happen in phases, though.
Okay.
You know, there'll be a sculpture and then.
We can start now.
Pat?
Raising money.
More importantly, I think we should vote to accept the donation, number one. And then we, then we can worry about the rest.
So let's, so, so I think if there's any more, okay, so if we're ready, I'll go ahead and call the question. Do we remember what the motion is? To accept the donation of the sculpture? That's the motion on the table for Judy's Garden?
As long as I don't have to say what the EAC stands for, I'm ready to vote on it.
Okay, so all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstained. And the motion passes six-zero, and.
Mr. President Finer?
Yes.
May I jump back to one conversation?
Sure.
May I also ask, is it okay to send Chief Golden home?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
I know he works crazy hours.
Yeah, yeah. I know this is so exciting that you don't want to miss anything, but please.
I don't want to talk about the statue.
Get some rest, and thank you for your service.
So I did want to just jump back one agenda item. My apologies.
Yeah.
I believe Councilperson Stump is correct. Harb does not require seven members to live in the borough. It requires four members from the committee to live in the borough, and three potentially to live outside the borough. It was done that way to be able to bring in higher, wrong way, to bring in talent that maybe didn't physically live in the borough, so.
Correct. And that, that is a, that is a, thank you for bringing that back and for clarifying that.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure.
That kind of underscores the importance of technical, professional skills in that area, unlike other boards and committees.
I think you do have four that currently, at least four that live in the borough currently, from who's there.
Yes, that would be correct.
So architects from Arizona are welcome to apply.
I know he's got that business place, does he?
Well, it doesn't matter, because Tim.
Jerry.
Gail.
Posey's.
Right, and I've, and Ward, yes.
Okay, so I think, Councilperson Stump, you do have four that live already, so.
And Taylor.
Because you need a quorum of residents, but you don't need.
Oh, yeah, I see a form of residents. I don't know why I couldn't see that when I needed to see it, but I, unless you edited the website, Chris, and it magically appeared.
Okay.
Okay, that's good to know.
Okay, so that's what that means. All right, my apologies.
Sorry, did you, did you mention how many of the current members are residents?
We believe at least four.
So we, okay, so this one does not need to be a resident. Okay.
Jerry, Dan.
Well, do we know, do we know about Rita and Dan?
I think they all are.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's obviously the preferred situation.
Right.
But it's not.
And it was all, it was there so we, you could go outside and maybe get another architect or somebody has, you know, if somebody moved to Lower Magfield from, yeah, had big experience.
Right, or like if there was a local business owner or somebody who's very involved in the community, but they live three houses outside of the borough, for this specific thing, we would, we would allow them to, which makes.
Thank you for bringing that back.
Yep.
And do you know what Harb stands for?
Historic Architecture Review Board. That one I know. It's only the EAC I struggle with.
All right.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So C N E D stands for Community and Economic Development. That's the one I usually get.
This is actually my agenda item, though. I think what, I think.
I don't know why it's under there, but.
I was wondering.
I think the statue was yours.
I'd like to introduce you, Harry Stump.
Yeah.
For this.
Thank you for doing your part for Community and Economic Development today.
Thank you for the introduction, David. So, the background of this is, there was a, over the summer, we, we had some, we had a very long discussion of public comment about the way the minutes are recorded. We had a couple residents who were looking at, like, what Lower Magfield does, and saying, oh, why can't it be more this way? And it just kind of kept being brought up for various council meetings. We ended up revising minutes from a previous meeting, which is fine, nothing wrong with that. And kind of where this ended up is it got assigned to Community Outreach to do research on what other municipalities are doing, just to kind of make sure that we're, you know, on the up and up, and not just, well, we're doing it the way we've always done it. So I looked at nine boroughs in Lower Bucks County, even though specifically it was said, oh, let's be more like Lower Magfield. I excluded townships, just because townships are typically much bigger. They typically have a higher tax base, more staff, more, like, it affects the way, when you have more resources, you're often able, whereas boroughs are often smaller, they're one or two square miles. Typically, we have, in fact, as I was reading different persons' minutes, I was like, oh, yeah, they're, they're really operating on a shoestring staff, like, this person is doing that, and doing that, and doing that. And so, that's why I just looked at boroughs. So, so, and then another one of the concerns that was brought up was that residents couldn't see the minutes until they were posted on the website or until we debate them at the council meeting. And I did find one borough, I will go to that actually, because one, hang on, let me, I think it is, oh, here it is. So it's interesting, Langhorne Manor, actually, they have to where their minutes, the minutes from the September 23rd meeting are the ones that are most recently available that have been voted on. And then October 14th and 28th are actually listed on the website in draft. And so they actually post them before they're even approved. That was the only municipality I found that did it that way. We typically, you know, we, us and other municipalities typically, you know, we, we look over the minutes and we, it's not something where we generally invite the public into that process. In the time I've been on council, I haven't seen any other instance where there was a member of the public that objected to the way they were being classified, but, I mean, that's potentially something we could do, but I only saw one other example. And, you know, in my mind, there's a potential downside of, you know, posting draft versions of things online, even though it was very clearly watermarked draft. Posting that on the website, you know, and then you gotta change it out and all that stuff. Is there anybody that was really, this is a working session, so does anybody, does anybody think that's something that there's value in us going down that path, or?
No.
Okay.
A perfect example, a perfect example was the one today.
Yeah.
If that was posted out as a draft, somebody read that and say.
Yeah.
Or doesn't, doesn't want Harb involved in what we do in the borough.
Yeah.
That's what somebody would say.
Well, it's like, it's like when, it's like, it's like when.
Luckily, I saw the video, so I knew you didn't say.
When the paper has a headline, then the next day, the issue of correction, correction on the last page and find print.
Right.
So, but here's, here's where, here's what's interesting about that draft, not that we should do that, but what's interesting about it is that, so we have the opportunity to vote, to look at the minutes and vote for them. But when we list the comment of a member of the public, they don't have the opportunity to vote. They'd have to come in here and say, that's not correct. But I think a solution for that, that might work, is that we just say, that person made a comment, and we don't say what the comment is. And the solicitor said that we could do that. Like, actually, take out, we have a recording, right? So, a comment was made by so-and-so, a comment was made by so-and-so, done.
I'm not sure that I.
We were not, you know.
Go ahead, sorry, I finished.
Your comments, and then we don't have a situation where the minutes were approved and they didn't say that, and then.
I think most of the comments are just generalized, and it's just a, it's a brief description. It's like a paraphrase, and it's not like an exact quote.
Yeah.
And I'm okay with that, because that's the way it's always been. And my quotes aren't in there like a quote, like everything I said. It's just, they're paraphrasing.
It's paraphrasing, right.
And I think that's a very okay thing. It gives you the general.
Right.
General idea of how the conversation has gone.
I, I think I would agree with Michelle, just because, you know, like, for example, when Facebook decided they weren't keeping our videos on the website anymore, and they just suddenly disappeared. I mean, fortunately, we streamed YouTube as well, you can find them there. But I know, you know, we, you can go on the borough website and find minutes going back longer than when there's video. And so for me, I'd like there to at least be a topic. And, and here's the reality, in the, in the five years I've been thoroughly paying attention to Borough Council meetings, this is the first time a member of the public has come in and complained. I think if they, if, as long as we listen to those complaints when they do, and take action on them, I would say that, you know, us being an elected member of the council, you know, we're the ones tasked with the responsibility to vote on things like this. That's not something we necessarily extend to the general public.
I, I think you should have enough in there so that there's a hook, so that you would know to go to the.
Website.
Video. For instance, if the comment said, Resident XYZ commented on the poor snow removal, comment down the, not poor, comment on the snow removal process.
There, that's it, exactly.
So then in the few, so three years from now.
Right.
So that's the hook to, if somebody, we're about to do the new contract for new snow removal, we want to go find out what.
Or if we're searching, if we're using AI to run a search.
And then you can go to the recording, and you can see what was, that, that's kind of what I'm getting at.
Which is a little, a little bit less than the paraphrase. I'm not saying paraphrase what they said, but just identify the topic of what they were talking about.
Right, but still have the backup of, if you want more information, go watch the video.
The, the key is, like, I, I think it's true to happen with one person, but I think that realistically, I don't know how many people are looking at our process. I, I think that we can, it can be a win for everyone by applying, I just don't think we have a policy on it. And I think the simple policy is just to say, if, I'm talking specifically about public comment, because that's where, everything else, counsel, we already have a process for. You look at it, you don't like it, you say, you want to vote for it, whatever.
Right.
With public comment, paraphrasing a public comment, if we just put the name of the resident and the topic.
Yep.
Don't go into what, trying to paraphrase their comment, and we avoid 99% of the problem.
I think an excellent example is November 5th. It, I won't give the names, but I'll just say a resident addressed council regarding lack of information available about the Borough Tower. Next sentence says a communication will go out from the borough about it on 11/6. I think that's perfectly, like, you said something about a hook. I think that.
That one went. That, that's like, here's the resolution.
I think than what you and I are talking about. I would've said, resident had made a comment about, about information about the tower, bird.
Okay.
And that's it.
Really? Okay. All right.
But, so here's the thing, too, unless, unless, which we're, this is the first step in the discussion. We're not writing a formal policy tonight. And so, I will say this, just offer my opinion on it. I, I think that, even though this brought up a very good point, and we're listening to it, I think a lot of this was brought up by someone who was upset about something, and so they wanted to change our processes to, so I, I think, here's my findings. In looking at nine boroughs, I found that everyone does it a little bit differently, and there has to be, I mean, yes, we can potentially adopt a policy to have guidelines, but there, there has to be some interpret, like, we have a human doing this. An absence, an absence of a full transcript, which we'll get to that, because one municipality does have a full transcript. It's 119 pages. I'll get into that. My findings were, there is no uniform way to do it that is necessarily objectively better or objectively worse. I mean, even, some of these, as I'm reading them, there was one municipality, I won't mention the name of the municipality, but I was like, wow, these minutes sound very casual. Like, they're almost a little too casual. I don't know that I'd want to do it that way. But that's how they do it.
Do we have an actual written guideline? Like, if our, if our person who does this leaves, which pays for somebody else, what happens? Do they, do they have any, any guiding document by which they do this? Because that's kind of what I'm trying to address. I don't, I'm not really.
Sure.
That concerned about how, how much, but it, I think that there's a, maybe I haven't seen it, so maybe it exists.
It might.
But I think that that should exist, even if it's to keep it the way it is. What is, how do you describe the way it is?
Almost.
You know the person is being consistent, applying the same rule to every public.
Almost for when I did the appointments and reappointments, I had a document that here's the way we did it, that specifically told me it wasn't binding. So I had the flexibility to, hey, I'm gonna tweak this because it doesn't make sense. It's clunky. But in the interest of transparency, I stated tonight at the meeting, hey, this is what the document says. I decided we're doing this. So there's, there's a level of accountability there. So, you know, but for this, it's, I don't know, it's just, it's, it's, I agree with you that there should be a general, we may have it.
Yeah, should have some.
If Paula was here, I could get an answer.
It's possible that we have it, because she was going through a process of documenting different things inside the borough.
Right.
Primarily in case keep people left in their knowledge, at least we're capturing it, what the processes are. This may have been one that's already been done. If it's not already been done, she should do it.
Yeah.
And the main complaint that I've heard.
And then we can look at it.
And I, I think I've heard more than from just that one person. The main complaint I've heard is consistency. You said this with this one, this with this one.
Yeah.
That's what I've heard.
Some you put lots of detail in, some you put nothing.
Yeah, which tells me, A, people are human, and that's understood, but B, maybe there is no guideline. So the first step might be, what is the actual current process?
Right. So, so, yeah, so that was Langhorne Manor. So then, Langhorne, their, Langhorne Borough, their minutes are compiled by their borough manager. The last date available was October 8th. So this is pretty consistent, that Yardley Borough is actually, by us having them posted on the website shortly after the following meeting, two weeks later, we're actually ahead of the curve of most municipalities in this area. A lot of them, you wait four to six weeks, some even longer. One municipality, the last ones available were July 15th, was the last I could access. I mean, that's now, what, four months? So, so Langhorns are done by their, their borough manager, they're nine pages. Now, ours are sometimes two to three pages, sometimes they're three to five, so, you know, they're getting into a little more detail there. And that's what I found, honestly, as I was looking, there were some of them where a little more detail was appreciated, and there's some where it's like, okay, this actually makes it really hard to find stuff, because it's almost like. actually makes it really hard to find stuff, because it's almost like, rather than just a hook, they're trying to explain everything, and I now got the gist of what happened. But it's like, it's so long that you're, you know, your mind kind of skips over things.
You got one gist of what happened. You might not have gotten.
Well, that's true. I might not have.
You weren't at that meeting, you didn't see.
That's where there's almost an advantage to keeping it shorter, because what if, I don't even know what I got. What if I got someone's opinion?
Yeah, exactly.
Of what happened. Like, that one actually said, this member of the public is being disruptive. And I was like, whoa, okay.
I mean, if you remember, the solicitor basically told us that we are within, I kind of sensed, I don't know what you all thought, he was kind of saying, there's a benefit to making it as short as possible, because you run the least amount of risk of getting anything wrong, takes less work, and you're allowed to do it. So depends on, you know.
So I will say this, too, there's definitely a level of kind of, we're damned if we do and damned if we don't, because kind of the same general group of people who would complain, oh, the minutes aren't detailed enough, I want you to do it more this way. Sometimes it's then the same people who turn around and go, oh, gotcha.
Always add information, but if you have too much.
Can't take it away.
You can't take it back.
And we have recordings.
Easily.
We have recordings. So to anyone who said you don't, it's too brief.
Well, the Pennsylvania state law says that the recording's not, if I read this right, is not a replacement for minutes.
Right, but the solicitor told us that basically if we, if we, there's, there's this way of doing it where you just state what happened. You don't go into the content. You kind of, it's structural. Applebaum made a comment that, you know, it's very, very, or regarding, maybe it's kind of like what you said, made a comment regarding this. Very, very, very minimal. He had examples of how to do that. And then if somebody complains it's not enough, then while there's a recording, you can watch the record.
When you say, Applebaum made a comment, it's not a joke. I had to clarify that.
Thank you.
Yeah, Applebaum made a lengthy comment.
Maybe the long-winded comment.
Man, oh man.
Sorry.
I opened up the door. No, but what I'm saying is, let's not use me, let's use a person from the, from the resident. For instance, the one comment also made that day had to do with, you know, the walkability and the crossings by that gentleman. And not everything's, by the way, is a complaint. I just want to, you know, sometimes it's informational. You know, I mean, yes, it's rare that someone comes in and, you know, gives us accolades, but there are times when there's just point of information.
Right.
And I think it, personally, I think it's important to not just say that this person came in and made a comment, but that, what was the comment?
Yeah, I like.
And not, and maybe not quoted, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but.
Yeah.
You know.
Um, yes, so.
Factual, not even paraphrased or quoted, but just commented about concerns about being able to cross from the Commons to the railroad station. That's all. That's not too much.
So, yeah, so appreciate that. Thank you, David. So Tully Town, their minutes, and there's a reason why I'm saying the page numbers, because at the end, I'm going to bring that together. So Tully Town, their minutes were the last available, which was September 9th, so a little over two months ago, which is six pages long. They're compiled by their borough manager. Pendell, theirs are four pages long and include the mayor's report, which is two, or manager's report is two pages, which is attached. So I thought that was interesting. And theirs actually, if we were to go further with this, they would be one of the ones I would say to look at, Pendell, because their most recent minutes available for November 3rd, they had a meeting last night. That means they approved those minutes and then got them posted on the website right away, which is actually.
How can you do that?
Yeah, they, they had a meeting November 3rd, they approved them November 17th.
Oh, 17th.
And then they're posted today, which is basically what we do as well. So they, I would say they're the most, where some of these municipalities, it's like two months. So they're kind of the most in line with what we do, the most similar to us, I guess.
I think we used to be two months.
Did we? Yeah. So we're, so we're making progress, then.
Yeah, I don't know.
We used to not post them at all on the website.
Well, that's true. So then the Borough of Hommeville, theirs are five pages long. Their last available was August 4th. So anyway, I feel like I'm, this is almost like a burn book, like I'm putting people on plaster. Not intending to be that way. Bristol Borough, I could not find their minutes anywhere on their website. Not that they're not there, I just couldn't find them. Mooresville, they have six pages. They're compiled by a staff member. So not the borough manager, actually confirmed that by speaking with the mayor. Their last ones, they were the ones that were July 15th for their last ones posted. The Newtown Borough, theirs are seven pages, so theirs are on the longer side. They're compiled by a staff member, their borough secretary, so not the borough manager, different staff members. So again, similar to what we have. Their last ones available were September 16th. I thought theirs were interesting because they were longer, because, you know, something else that was brought up was about putting people's addresses in the minutes. They actually mentioned every single person who was in the room, who's not an elected official, like every single person, first and last name, who attended the meeting. So.
Do any of the, thank you for doing all the research. Do any of the minutes that you've seen have any sort of disclaimers in them? Have you seen anything like that?
Hmm, let me see if this one did.
So like, I'm thinking of just a different avenue here, is we have some sort of a, you know.
One that might have one more left, and that might be the one that did.
We have like a standard boilerplate disclaimer that basically says, these are the minute, the solicitor, you know, gives us a statement and says, if you are the member of the public and something that you stated was incorrect, bring it to the attention of the council for consideration for correction. And then that way, it covers us for, somebody was misrepresented, they didn't.
Yeah.
There's a way to, because we, there's nothing states that we can't post the minutes and then amend them later.
No, there's.
The one or two times it happens, we can.
Better than putting a draft up.
No, no, no draft. We, we put approved minutes up, but with a statement that says, if you're a member of the public, that your comment was incorrectly represented, you know.
If we do that, I think we just sort of have to make it.
There's no.
Clear that, you know, we don't put like word by word quotes, you know, because.
Yes.
If somebody is looking for, I didn't say that, I said something different. We don't want to get into that because.
That's where the guidelines make sense, to have a one-page, these are the guidelines for how we.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I think I'd like to.
And then when somebody says that in a council meeting, so these are the guidelines we follow.
I think from what I can recall reading the minutes, I don't think we get a lot of quotes in those minutes.
I don't agree, so I would.
Which is good, you know, because I don't.
Applebaum said.
Well, the one you mentioned, David, said, from Brad Levine, said, addressed council regarding a committee at Yardley Commons interested in the development of a plan for pedestrian walkways and safety in the borough. Fairly benign. He could come back and say, oh, actually, no, I asked for a crosswalk at Yardley Commons.
Yeah.
You know, that's the kind of thing that, that some people are more sensitive to the specifics of what they said in the history books.
So I would say this, there's, out of the eight ones that I've read, they're all very similar. They're all very similar to ours. I think ours is in line of the more professional level and the, you know, the, maybe we could be a little more descriptive without getting into the weeds, maybe, but I think some of that is just going to come down to people's style. You know, it's kind of like you, you know, you hire an employee and each, each employee's going to have their own, their own style of doing it.
By the way, I think it's okay to make a mistake and possibly misrepresent what they said, because it happens.
Sure, it happened with the worry.
But, but, as long as you're not defaming anyone, that's all. I think that's critical.
Right. So.
You could misrepresent what somebody's saying, like, like mine was actually saying, if you think about it, mine was pretty significant, because it was saying, I, it looked like it was saying, I'm asking not to have HARB look at it. So that could be a big difference, right? So you, you know.
But that's why we have the review process.
But that's why we review.
That's why we have a process.
And that's why we like to keep the, like, the minutes minimal, so that we can review them and they're not like, you know.
When you get some of these that are nine pages, your brain starts to just kind of go, okay, and you start to kind of check out, and you don't read the whole thing.
I think we're all on board with minimal. I think that if, if, if the way we do it could be summarized into some sort of guideline, then that means we're doing it consistently. If it can't be, then that means it's very much up to whatever, and then it needs to be kind of defined a little bit.
I think honestly.
So that would be a good process to do. And then maybe to go and put some sort of a statement that says, maybe it's a general statement on the website, it says minutes are.
Nobody else has that, though.
Approved. And then if you are misrepresented, bring it to council's attention.
I would say, if you think you're misrepresented, bring it to the borough manager's attention for review. Because if you haven't come here, then they're going to say, you had a generic statement, you said, I talked about crosswalks.
Yeah, bring us the borough manager.
But you didn't say the part when I said, I've been here 22 years and I almost got run over three times. So.
And then the borough manager.
They're going to come up to the mic and do that every time.
I like that, because then the borough manager can show, these are our guidelines.
Right, and then she'll look at the video.
That meets the guidelines.
And then come to us if she thinks it should be.
Exactly.
I would just like to personally say that I think Mary Ann does an excellent job. And I think that the way she's doing it has been working for us, with the exception of maybe one person that was not happy with the minutes. We, if we see a problem with something that we said, we pick up on it and, you know, request to have a, you know, a change made in the minutes.
So I do, I do have one more option I'll give you before we close this out. So New Hope Borough, if we wanted to go this route, their minutes are 119 pages long. They actually.
That seems reasonable as a transcript.
They actually put, they actually put four pages on one PDF page, just to make it smaller, so the document is only 48 pages, but it's 119 pages worth of content. So I actually reached out to their borough manager to inquire, because I know you mentioned the possibility of, what about using AI? What about using a transcript service? So they have a court reporter that attends every meeting, and they love it, and it helps them have a lot of clarity, and they can go back and review. But again, New Hope, one of the wealthiest boroughs in the county, yeah, they have a court reporter. If we want to spend a, you know, $25,000 a year to have a court reporter on the low end.
Well, I've taken audio. If you look at YouTube, it actually does an automatic transcript when I search for.
Let's not go down this.
But this, but this isn't that.
I know, I know. This is, this is a much more, that's, it's really cool, but not, not in our.
Not necessary.
None of.
The reason why I wanted to.
Good about it is that you can go back and look things up.
Sure.
For us, it's helpful to have it in someplace.
It even has several pages where it's indexed, so you can go to the word worry and see where that was mentioned three times in the meeting. Again, it's cool, but here's the point why I'm bringing this up, because obviously, this is not a viable option for us with everything else we have going on. But the reason why it's not a viable option is because it's not fiscally responsible for the taxpayers of our community. And, you know, I can maybe understand in a place like New Hope where you, you know, you have a lot of development happening, you have a lot of moving parts, you have a lot of lawyers involved, maybe it is worth it for them to really cover themselves. But I just, I don't think we're on their scale to where we need that. So I think it's awesome for them. But that, that was kind of my findings. Personally, unless anybody else feels like, outside of putting some general guidelines together, which that's just something we could, one, we could ask Paula if it exists. If not, we could task her we're doing it. I don't really feel like there's any further action needed on this, because.
It may exist.
They may exist.
Well, let's just get. Just, I was wondering, I know, did you want to get public comment?
Sure.
Yeah, I'd like to hear, if public wants to say anything about that.
So.
Oh.
What do our future council people think?
Oh, I didn't even think of that.
Wink, wink.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Martha Hollitt, I'm 24 Penn Valley Drive.
You don't have to give your address.
We took that off, that was part of this exercise.
Yeah, you don't have to give your.
I know, but they did it at the police planning committee, so I thought it was optional. Okay.
It is. You can say if you want to, it's just not required.
I would be in favor of just a neutral description in the minutes. We have the YouTube, let's give people, if people have contentions about, we can deal that on an ad hoc basis. But I, and I think the guidelines are a good idea, so that something can be presented to residents, that this is how we do it. Yes, thank you.
Well, that's good.
Thank you. I like the word, I think the word neutral is the key, is the key word.
Neutral's a very good word to use.
And that should go in the guidelines if you don't have them.
Definitely.
And then if it's, Mr. Applebaum had a lengthy comment, that might not be neutral.
But what if Mr. Applebaum likes that it was said that way?
Yeah, I don't know. Then he'll have to come and complain.
I just don't want my jokes cut.
I, I expect my line about not knowing how to spell the EAC to make the minutes. If it doesn't make the minutes, I'm going to be very upset.
Thank you for your comment. Are we, any additional comments in the public? I think we're ready to adjourn this meeting.